Welcome everyone to our work session tonight. Thank you ITC folks for being here tonight and setting this up for us and recording tonight. And this may be our home for awhile until we can figure out something different. One thing I'd like to make comment on is, I've seen what they say was our Haywood County School sign there. If you recall that, it was behind where I said or where we said. And they say it went up about two to three feet. Show us about where it was there.
It was about right here.
Holy cow. That's a lot of water. That beat the other one by several feet. Anyway, thank y'all for doing that and getting it down here and getting this all set up. Mr. Francis is doing this by telephone. He's right here to my left, sitting here on his phone. And so we'll go ahead and get started. Turn it over to Dr. Putnam from Grant Heights.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll, we'll go ahead and let Patrick, since he's our guest.
Sure.
We'll let Patrick Bradshaw with Civil Design Concepts begin us, if he's okay with that, and bring us up to date.
So, just big picture and then, you know, I don't know where everybody's at in the conversation, but just to give you a sense, so, we are currently in varying states of evaluation and moving through the procurement of work for repair on six different fields. So, four of those are in Canton, Pisga Baseball, Pisga Softball, Canton Middle Baseball, Canton Middle Softball. And I'm gonna talk in that bucket for a moment and then we can transition to Tuscola. Because unfortunately, or fortunately, the fact that all four of those aforementioned fields had pretty significant damage from the floods of 21, we have plans readily available for what the return to repair would look like, if you will. You know, some of it had to be modified a little bit, some fence is salvageable, so to speak, but more or less the picture is there, we just needed to modify the picture. We didn't have to start it at zero with no data in order to get those in a shape that they could be put out to the market to bid. So, all four of those fields in, in the Canton area, if you will, Pisga and Canton Middle are currently out to bid and we plan to receive bids on that work. And it's the varying degrees, if you've been down there, seeing them, you know, as to what the extent of damage is at each one respectively. But, we're planning to just receive bids on all of those as individual projects on November 25th. So, that's about 15 or so days out, 15, 16 days out. So, but they're on the street. And part of that's set up by North Carolina General Statute. You've gotta run ads and paper general circulation, so forth, so on. Seven days pre-bid will be held later this week. And then, if you have time for questions, you can't, you shouldn't reasonably issue an addendum, so that's just sets up that timeline, if you will, for bidders to have time to look through them, gather their pricing from those, and submit a bid. So, that's the, the status of the four of those fields. Tuscola Softball and Baseball, so those did not have the benefit of, you know, prior plans, two, three years old pivot to. So, we've had to start at ground zero from a data collection effort. Survey field work and office work is complete. We received those surveys on Friday from the surveyor. So, we just started today, kind of, you know, assimilating that information, you know, a whole lot of computer data, right? But, we're putting it in play and the contract that we currently have with y'all, which may be subject to discussion tonight, I think, but is, you know, to maybe provide you with two or three different concepts, which would be a range of costs for the potential repair of those. The softball field, Tuscola Softball took much more of a beating than did Baseball. You know, there's just heavier damage, a lot more seal deposition, areas around the dugout undermined and so forth. You know, both of them took on extensive amount of fence damage and work, but the field itself, the playing surface itself on the softball field is, is much more heavily damaged than, than is Baseball. So, playing out a timeline for that would be, we're pushing to get those advertised for bid about the 25th of this month, plus or minus, recognizing that that's at the front end of Thanksgiving week, trying to be mindful of that. There's a balancing act in putting a project out to bid and rushing people to get a bid. A lot of times, they don't have time to officially answer their questions. Well, how do they abate that risk? They put money on top of it. So, it, there's a balancing act that we wanna give them enough time to look at it, but not more time than they need. But, probably taking bids about the 16th of December for those fields. And, so, to kinda wrap this up in a big picture way, I would anticipate with those prospective bid dates, the Canton fields could conceivably go to construction about December 1. Maybe we beat that by a few days, plus or minus, it will depend on y'all's meeting schedule and award and, you know, the numbers we see, obviously. And then, to Tuscola fields, that would be a start of work at or about January 1. I mean, if we open bids on the 16th, I just don't reasonably see a contractor, you know, that would start over Christmas and New Year holidays, you know, so, less for calendar purposes, call it January 1. Any of this work, and again, you can zero in on a Canton Middle Softball and say, that's probably not three months worth of work, but for conversational purposes, we call all of them, right now, about 100 days, you know, so, just a shade over three months. That usually allows reasonable weather days, but again, we couldn't be aligned with a worst part of the year in the calendar to be, number one, moving a little bit of dirt. Obviously, we don't have to move a mountain, but you are trying to fine grade and reestablish, you know, a decent playing surface. And then, the second thing you're trying to do is grow grass or get sod to establish. You know, well, you can reasonably, we fall here on that fine line between, if we had a mild winter, we're probably, and I'll, I'll yield to any agronomy experts in the room, you know, you probably run a pretty good chance of the sod playing out okay, but if we get, you know, deep, deep freezes, you run a chance of losing some sod.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so, I'm sure as we get into the, you know, entertaining bids and hearing questions from contractors, those are things that, you know, we will probably hear from them and need to address as we move through the bidding period, such as, we're glad to, you know, we're glad to install the sod, but we can't warranty it against freeze, you know, they just, you know, give them the time of year. You know, so, all these things are of consideration. I know that at a high level, the goal always is to try to get kids back in place as quick as we can. I think that opportunity is, I think we need to prepare for the best, or prepare for the worst and hope for the best. You know, a mild winter could set up pretty well and things go our way, you know, your, your coin flips as good as mine on how mild will the winter be, you know. I mean, even if it's just a wet winter, but not very, very cold, you can just lose a lot of working days for those trades, you know, that need to be in there. It's, it's hard to, hard to grow in a mud hole with a, with a razor, you know, when, when you're down to laser grading and, you know, that's, that's the kinda things that they do out there. It's just, it's tough to do it in freezing bad environment, so. So, that's a, just a overall, where are we today? You know, so, at that point, I don't know, questions or thoughts, ideas or otherwise?
Just, this is probably the Dr. Putnam, I think, Graham, when will baseball, softball, what's the start date usually on that?
They'll start practicing, Mr. Kirkpatrick, he's been around long enough to know, they'll probably start practicing some in January and February.
Practice and then I think in February it'll be the official practice they'll start playing. They may even have a game late February, but then season starts in March. I mean, I actually may even have a schedule somewhere already. Jim, what did you say?
He said February.
I just said February is when they start. What's the, what was the general statute that Patrick referred to about having to put stuff out to bid?
Question was, is what was the general statute that was stated about putting things out to bid?
So, there's, it's just the North Carolina federal bidding law, I'll refer to our county, I don't, I think, I can't quote, 40, I think it's 4230, but don't quote me on that. Yeah, yeah.
Public bid needs to be out there for so many days before you close it. What is the day, seven, 15?
Seven days is the absolute minimum allowed by the statute.
You run the risk of paying more.
You run, you very much run the risk. I mean, people just, you know, can't reasonably take off a set of plans, go, go to the market for pricing, you know, you just don't see it. If you had, you had a 10 by 10 area, you wanted concrete, you could bid that in seven days, you know, kinda thing.
I'm gonna wear a briefcase and get this out, have a little bid process, let's talk about emergency got to do it.
Mr. Bradshaw, all due respect, just a simple question. What, with it being November 4th, what is involved from your end to make the bid start the 25th, 21 days from now? Is that your plans getting drawn up based off the survey?
It is.
Okay, okay. So, you had to spend three weeks on your end to get it ready to go out to bid?
That's right, yeah, on the Tuscola side.
Gotcha, yes, sir, that's what I'm talking about.
And you got the survey on Friday? Now, when was the survey, and this may be to you, whoever, I mean, I heard a survey was done two weeks ago, before Friday. So, the survey was done, when was the survey done?
Whatever day, y'all had a meeting and authorized our contracts, and I know that the field work started, I think you called me, I think, Mr. Francis called me on a Friday morning?
I believe it was Monday, Thursday.
I think y'all met on a Thursday. It started that Monday, the field work did. Field work took the better part of a week and then they grew it up over the following week, if you will. Yeah, and then we received it Friday, so that was the second week, I believe.
Are they, any way to take some days out of this, for instance? If you get this, especially Tuscola and Tuscola Softball and Baseball, if you don't get that started until January 1st, and of course, we all know that January is normally not, it's usually your worst weather month, are they any way to tighten that schedule up to hopefully get them in there in December sometime? Because my, my math says, if you start January 1st, if you're 100 days to play out, that's mid-April and you, your, the season's almost over by then.
You're well into it.
Yeah.
Patrick, this might be a good time to discuss the options we discussed on the farm.
So, an, an option would be, you know, and I went back down to Tuscola, both softball and baseball today, to look at the idea of, you know, not a extensive renovation or repair, but just repair to playable, if you will. Fence has gotta be done, fences have largely been destroyed. Softball, I will tell you, at Tuscola is beyond a minor renovation, if you will. I do think Tuscola Baseball could stand a chance, if you will, of minor renovation to repair playable, you know, without stripping, like I say, that's, that's really, the dirt work part of it is of concern, but just being able to reestablish grass, if you start stripping the outfield, you know, in whole, the idea that you can establish sod even sufficient to not have trip hazards and not have seams, anybody that's been around sod, you know, it's kinda like, it's, it's an instant yard if you just want a yard, but to have athletic play on it, you know, you can get somebody hurt, number one, playing on sod before it's ready and sufficiently, you know, taken. And like I say, the seams just, you know, you got, you got seams, just miles of them, you know, throughout it, you know, they're probably sod, probably in 24, 30 inch strips, you know, so, you got, you know, just seams running, innumerable number of them. So, with that said, now, and curiously, Tuscola Baseball did not take on, it did take on some sediment and seal, but not nearly like the softball field did. I described it, I think, to Dr. Putnam, the softball field almost looks like a reverse mohawk, you know, it's like you got grass in left field and right field, but then right through center field, I mean, is just a, it's like an extension of a pitcher's mound, you know, if, if it were a baseball field, it's just a big hump of sediment, you know, right through it. Well, there's not gonna be a way to not touch it from a grading perspective and/or reestablishing it in, in some kinda ground cover. But, the baseball field alternatively did not take that. Right field, curiously, took, you know, has the most evidence of sediment deposition across it, you know, and could probably be, you know, just kinda like a, not a full-blown variation where you're pulling, you know, big plugs, but, you know, do like a, you know, more like a needle tie kind of, you know, variation to it, overseed it, fertilize it good, and, you know, you'll, you'll probably see some regeneration pretty quick in there. You know, you didn't really lose the profile of the field, you know, so, I mean, it, it could be pared down. It would not be, you know, let's say, at opening day, it would not be the kind of renovation that we have seen at other facilities, you know, but I think it's a balancing act, right? You know, when you just look across the county at the beaten, that, you know, our athletic facilities took everywhere, you know, I mean, Wayne's Will Reg, Elk's Park, you know, all of them just took an absolute beating through this thing, so.
So, so you're telling me that basically that would be a, number one, it would be safe, it could be fixed safely, but it would not be a complete renovation? And at that point, would you recommend that we later went on and did, did more renovations, or?
It, it could. That outfield is not in great shape today, you know, I think even pre-flood. That outfield at Tuscola, you know, it's just, I think it drains decent, I, I hear anecdotally and I think it's better than anecdotal, I've talked with, with Mackey McKay at some length, and I can't remember in my lifetime, anybody's probably spent more hours down there than Mr. McKay has. You know, the right field side doesn't drain the best in the world, but the remainder of the field seems to be draining adequately, but it just has, you know, some underfoot, just some underlation to it, that a newly laser graded and sodded outfield, you just don't experience very much of that, you know, so, could that be done at a later date? Sure, it could be. But, that's why, you know, whittling down, David, I think your question, whittling down the scope of work is probably the best chance you have. I just don't think we can save enough days on the front end to get them in a, at a beneficial place, that it would save the construction period.
Well, I think that's, that's a fair assessment.
Yeah.
And that, and Mackey McKay, he's done probably as much work on any baseball and softball field in this county as anybody. And I know when I was the district administrator for Little League, he went to the World Series several years on the field crew as a volunteer and a very good man, does good work. I just think we need to explore all those possibilities. Number one, to get them on and get them on a good field safely this year, and then hopefully, if it can be done in a timely manner, to do it professionally before the next year. That would be just my, my guess.
Well, now, baseball starts February the 25th. That will be, I'll be for the whole district, Pisga, Tuscola.
25.
Yeah, I'll be February the 25th will be your first, first game.
Patrick, can you talk about the FEMA regulations as far as what can or cannot be done on a location?
So, what we experienced, and, and I say this in complete transparency, the most of our, our firm's FEMA experience has come, for better or worse, through our experiences with Haywood County Schools. What we have heard from them, to some great degree, is you are more than welcome to go do as much, let's say, volunteerism as you so choose, but when we come to photo document and, you know, work through you for your relief package or whatever that, you know, post-event funding might look like, anything that has been repaired, removed or otherwise is not gonna be eligible for funding, you know. But, do I think it is harmful to, you know, how much are they gonna pay you for debris removal anyway? I'd rather have the time, you know, if I'm associated, and Tuscola outfield is actually pretty clean.
Right.
You know, you might, you, you wouldn't fill up, you wouldn't fill up a dump truck bucket, you know, or a loader bucket right now on a track, honestly, with the debris that's left out there. The fence has been watered up. I think that they would likely, because it seems like fence that's in place has been left, you know, I would hope we could make a good play for them to get reimbursed for that fence. You know, it's still on site, I would recommend leaving it on site, you know, because that I'm aware of, is FEMA been through there? Okay, all right. You know, and what we, the process that we played out, and again, this, this event is just so much, lean is, is so much broader in geography than what we saw in 21, you know, but we sat down with our plans and basically just did a line item reconciliation. We spent, I don't know how many hours up at facilities, the better part of the day, going through all four of those fields in Canton, line by line, you know, just proved to me that this got taken, and I'm like, well, you saw it, you know, I mean, it's, it's, you know, a pretty granular conversation. You know, it's like fence around the, you know, they were, they were talking to us about trying to preserve fence that had been, you know, it's in that concrete curb, let's say, around the top. And I'm like, well, those posts are being over and there's no way to core that out of there with that damage in the curb. We gotta replace the curb, you know, so, like I say, that's the level of granularity that they get to. But, generally speaking, if it's general cleanup, I individually, my opinion is, I don't think it's harmful, 'cause I think the time is better served, you know, and I don't think that the reimbursement loss is, is a very big number for those simpler coaches.
Gotcha, that's fair.
So, it's my understanding that the fence is covered by insurance, correct? That's what we've been told. So, the fencing would not even be something that we would need to wait for FEMA on? And that's the major replacement at Tuscola Baseball, besides the moving of the dirt and putting on the grass? So, we had somebody that was like, ready to go and get it fixed for those boys. The, the insurance, has the insurance company been to assess the damage?
We took pictures of everything and that's all they require, is just picture of the situation.
So, that part, we wouldn't even need to wait on FEMA for, so I don't really personally see a need to wait on them to assess. I'm not sure that we are going to receive a lot of funds from FEMA. I don't have a lot of confidence based on what, on what I've heard, but in my heart, I think that most FEMA money should probably go to people who've lost their homes and their businesses and their livelihoods. I think it will go there before it comes to our athletic fields, not that we don't love our athletics, but I think as a priorities, I'm not sure that they will be high on the priority list. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Another peculiarity, you know, if you remember, the flood events of 21, you know, was that critical six weeks between? That was like a mid-August event, you know, so, we could move quickly, get things done, get them out to bid, well, we lost almost six weeks, in so much as any of us can choose when the flood comes, right? You know, but this was a late September event, almost six weeks later on the calendar. Well, that growing time, you know, as we talk about these other processes of bidding and awarding projects and getting people moving, when they sodded the fields at Pisga after the 21 events, you know, that was, they probably sodded those in last of October, you know, so they had the whole month of November, all of December to grow in, you know, it was reasonably mild. I wanna remember that it turned off, 'cause we had another one in construction at, at the golf course, but all of that said, you know, we had a fairly mild late fall, early winter, and so there was a lot of grass got established, you know, and that really helped that out. We just, we don't have the benefit of those six weeks even, you know, we're just kinda on our side for that in 21, so.
Well, even, from what you're saying, is the Pisga sod.
Are we talking about in possibly receiving from FEMA to fix the Tuscola Baseball field?
Did you hear the question? The question was, how much money do we expect to get reimbursed from, FEMA would hope to be reimbursed on the Tuscola Baseball and Softball Fields, Jim, was that the question?
Well, well, and softball, and can we do those projects separately?
Can we do them separately, is, that's a part of the question.
My recollection, Graham, you correct me if I'm wrong, is more or less on the 21 package, they, unless it was an upgrade to what we had prior, let's say that we had a dirt walking trail and we put it back in as concrete, they would've paid us for the dirt, but not for the concrete. So, you know, as we walk through each of these line items that I talk about, unless it was a betterment, they, we were made whole on those items in the, you know, going through the 21 process with them. The question that I think Jim Francis just asked, that I can't answer, is whether we could do part of it today and part of it, you know, I could see, I could see a reasonable person asking the question, well, well, if it was good enough to play on, it was good enough to play on, do we need to write you a check for the outfield? Does that make sense? If we got it in shape that we were satisfied to play on, why do they feel like we would, you know, get reimbursed at that point?
I think part of that was, can we do baseball and softball separately? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the question.
Yeah, and I think that is fair, because they, they explicitly had to do them all as separate projects, even where they shared a same property ID now.
Did you hear that, Jim?
Yeah, but, but again, how much are we expecting to give from FEMA to, for the baseball field?
That's probably a number, I would tell you orders of magnitude, and I didn't know the fence insurance conversation, Jim, but assuming they act as they did in 21, call it $250,000, $300,000, is probably a reasonable number.
Did you hear it, Jim?
Okay.
$250,000 to $300,000.
So, basically, there's $300,000 worth of damage to the field?
If you started and repaired it in a way, you know, kinda middle of the road, similar, all the fence, sod, re-profiled the outfield, replaced infield, I think that's a fair number.
Per field?
Per field or for the whole project?
Um, that would be per, probably more on a per-field idea. Some of them won't take quite that much, some of them will take more than that. Pisga Baseball and Canton Middle Baseball are, are pretty, pretty steep streams as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably in excess of that, just based on the amount. Again, I don't, and I, I probably apologize, but I don't know what's covered by insurance and what's not, but when I looked at the totality of work.
So, $300,000, you're including the fence?
Mm-hmm, and Tuscola, for Tuscola's purposes, I think it's probably a, a fair number there.
Is that the only thing that's covered by insurance?
Fence is the only thing that's covered.
But, any damage to facilities and any loss to the equipment?
Right, equipment would be covered.
Equipment would be covered.
$100,000 to duck.
$100,000 to duck.
We'd have to lose that, you know, that amount of stuff.
We'd have to have that much of a loss, of course, for the, to raise the duck.
So, if we go to, it's weird how they do it, the fence is, it's an umbrella, like it, any, any athletic field that has fence, they're covered, it's weird.
Well, if we just did fence and did the short version, would we even spend $100,000?
Well, part of the fence, you mean at that side or just?
At that side.
I don't know what the field part would require, probably not.
I mean, my thinking is that, for instance, Tuscola Baseball, since it's got less damage, if you will, if you just repaired the fence and did all the repairs and even the drainage and stuff that Mackey McKay's talked to, talked about, then you probably don't even meet the deductible. So, I say, we probably, probably need to consider just fixing. uh, then you probably don't even meet the deductible. So I say, we probably, probably need to consider just fixing.
I agree.
The, the deductible for the fence, we will make, they incorporate fencing at every site.
Yeah, is, that's right.
The, I know the mower, the gator, maybe some other pitching machine, stuff like that was totaled. Is that included in that deductible? Well, the fence, that's total separate. Okay. The fence is entirely separate, yeah.
Oh, so, so the.
So what you all approved.
The fence is cumulative between all the fields.
That's correct. I'll say one's different. It's a different type of pause.
Okay, well then, no, that's good, that's good enough.
So like the, the fence that you all approved at Pisgah Memorial, that's going to be part of that deductible. Whereas each other site will be two. So we've actually already made it to a little over half of that deductible.
Well, that's good to know because since we, at first we, we went to, they're all separate and then they're all together and then we were sort of a little confused on that. So I'm glad to know that because that makes easy decisions for me.
Yeah, Patrick, if we, if we chose to go ahead and just pay out of pocket and fix Tuscola baseball, can your mapping continue for future use?
It can, absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, now it's drawn, it's drawn to the point, so that's a good.
You know, and I, and I just thought on that idea, you know, um, if we got far enough in, just, you know, without even having to get finished, I think, but got far enough in to have confidence in, let's call it a future grading scheme?
Sure.
Of what re-profiling that outfield could look like. It's potential, we could fence and maybe even get a warning track in now because you don't need to grow grass in a warning track.
Yeah.
You know, just cut us a, cut us an edge. Um, Mackie had also alluded in the conversation I had with him that right field was maybe a little deeper, the, where the fence is today than they actually wanted it to be.
What?
Yeah, but there was conversation back whenever that fence was up, twenty years ago, I don't know, um, that soccer might practice there at some point.
Well, we, we did practice there because I practiced there, yeah. Yeah, we did.
So, so that said, he, he just raised the idea to me and I said, well, certainly we'll, we'll copy that as we move through. If that fence could be shortened out, that even abates some of the drainage is short, you know, so if soccer's not an ongoing activity down there, or we don't think that that dimensionally is an important aspect of it, you know, the movement of that fence could, you know, conceivably cure part of that drainage issue that they have concern about in outfield, so, um, like I say. But yeah, you know, number of things you'd want to get what you could done, um, but at the same time, yeah, re, stripping the outfield would definitely be a way if you want to play this spring.
That's fair.
It's my understanding that Mr. McKay is a licensed engineer, analyst, and general contractor, has, has a lot of experience and did that field originally, is that correct?
I think he said hands and fingers and everything that's going on down there.
Yeah.
We're thankful.
I don't hear you very sure. If he did go, what you say?
Well, I'll tell you this, he loves Mount near Little League, he loves, he loves Waynesville Middle School and he loves Tuscola High School. And, uh, so that's, that's a good thing. It's a lot of hard and passionate.
It's very evident to, to him.
The softball, the softball field is not on the table for that.
I don't think so. I think it's just too much.
I'm like you, when I saw things down there, it's much bigger than softball.
Well, on softball, I'll just tell you, having two kids down there, softball should have been fixed way before. Softball was already in trouble before the flood.
Right.
That field should have been fixed a lot more for some other time coming down. But I'm in agreement, and the only reason I hadn't really talked about the situation is because I do have a boy that plays Tuscola baseball. I want him to play in March or in February.
Yeah.
So for any way possible, yes, I'd like to do, I mean, I'd like to do that, but that's going to be up to this board and if I hit. Like I said, my opinion is if it's fixed by three or two months and get done, that's why I'd like to do it. But I mean, that's up to this board, which way we want to go. If we can't take action, but we don't reject to do it.
Right.
If we object to do it, right. So I mean, and that's the thing of, and I want to see Pisgah, I mean, I'm, I'm a fan of baseball and softball, but and I mean, I like to get, see all the fields for them to play because anytime, I mean, we've seen it on that side of the county.
That's right.
More than once, them not being able to play at their field. So, I mean, and if it's whatever the board decides, I will support it. But I mean, yeah, I want my boy to be playing February the twenty-fifth at Tuscola field. I want to see the girls on softball, but obviously the softball field, when you look at a three-foot rut right down through the middle of the, uh, pitcher mound, that's pretty rough. I mean, softball should have been fixed a long time ago, drainage and everything.
Well, I think it's important countywide that baseball and softball, we get our kids on these fields as soon as we can as possible. We, we did a lot of, safely. We did a lot of work on Pisgah Memorial Stadium in four weeks. We, we moved mountains on that and we need to move mountains for both sides of the county and baseball and softball as well.
I would challenge Graham, uh, of course, since he's bringing all this to building and grounds. With your expertise and Mackie McKay's expertise, our next building grounds, I'd love to see some plans and some ideas on how we can make that happen as fast as we can.
Can I ask a quick question? Um, since we're under the emergency, um, you know, provision, um, can we, do, do we have to go by that statute of waiting the, the two weeks to bid stuff out? I mean, can we go ahead and, and if we have contractors that we've used in the past like Mackie McKay or something, can we go ahead and, uh, if they're willing to do the work and it's a reasonable price, can we go ahead and say, go to it and not have to wait that two to three weeks?
Pat, Pat's patterns is like blow, so he don't, he, he, he's looking into it.
What would you have to contract? Just the fence, right?
I mean, we, we did it for the Memorial Stadium, so I mean, it looks like we could use the emergency, you know.
I think the difference, this is the part that's not being assigned. One's insurance money and one is a request for FEMA funds.
Yeah, one of.
Insurance money, show us your damage, call your proprietary vendor, which is Astroturf, go to work. Now you're talking FEMA funds, whole different ballgame.
But if we're not applying for FEMA funds on Tuscola baseball, right?
Baseball, the other three, we need the way and we need to do the.
No, I'm in, I'm in total, I'm in total agreement, absolutely.
You, you just have to understand, I, and, and I agree one hundred percent, made the claim from the jump. These kids need to be back on their field.
Absolutely.
And so as quickly as possible, you just have to understand you're potentially, correct me if I'm wrong, Patrick, you are potentially foregoing a claim on FEMA funds.
Yeah, I think, you know, that is a real risk based on what we heard in twenty-one. I think you're my opinion, that I'm riding the last thirty seconds.
It's like a law.
I'm glad you pointed it out. Without doubt, look at it. I think anything dealing with FEMA, you need to be a little cautious of, okay, because they're going to be a harder, harder thing. I don't know that you can say, that they would be as sympathetic to say, hey, this is something that you can do. Your duck games don't start until springtime, like once the emergency, getting your kids out there right, right now. I think it also makes a difference in that, that, and Grandma was just saying, too, with the insurance money, I don't think it makes much difference. I think you could go ahead and say, hey, we got that and go ahead and start on the Tuscola baseball field. I'm willing to say, I think that'd be within your, because it doesn't require FEMA documentation that they're going to require and have you do. So I think if you get Tuscola field under weather from what I'm hearing, it's not going to be any, fencing is the main thing.
Fencing is the biggest, probably about the biggest number down there.
Let's talk Tuscola Bay covered as, that's a no-brainer on the fence.
Well, I actually, I actually thought maybe covered under insurance because you got to pay a hundred thousand dollars deduct.
Yeah, I, I, I feel I'm covered with Tuscola baseball. Well, it's cumulative.
It's cumulative, so we, we've, we've almost hit sixty, um, with fence scapes, that contract that you all approved at Pisgah Memorial. So everything from then will just add on. So another quarter, you'll be at the hundred thousand deductible and then everything after that would be.
I think there's a lot of things going with the emergency money.
Pizzas or?
What has to be done, like by way, get things done, how big is, how much is that? I think that's a little elastic, but I would feel comfortable with Tuscola baseball field saying, because that doesn't involve FEMA. Plus I want, want your son to play there by February twenty-two.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well, here's what I'm getting. I haven't heard anybody reject to it. We're not taking any more action, but it looks to me like there's a green light.
Yeah, and let's, let's go back to Pisgah just a second.
Let's, right about this, right, we're done with that, okay?
Yeah, I mean, I'm like everybody pretty much agreed on it.
Good.
Let's get Tuscola rolling because we're not going to have to, it's going to be insurance money.
And, and for clarification sake, Tuscola baseball.
Um, and let's go back to Pisgah baseball, softball, Tuscola softball. You're, from what I'm understanding, you're not thinking we're going to get sodged, ready to play by February twenty-fifth?
I think we, if we choose to sod those, I think we have to be prepared for the idea that it may not be playable by then.
And if you see it, it ain't going to be.
And if you see it, it's not, it's not conventional seeding, we, we don't stand, we'd be lucky to honestly play on them in July, you know. Um, to be grown insufficient for, for that kind of play, you know.
So are there enough fields in Haywood County that were not damaged by the hurricane feasibly for them to have fields to play on? Like Neo or is there other fields?
You've got three fields. Every field, if you look at it, every field that I can think of, unless you look at a elementary school that has a, a baseball or soft, has a old playing baseball or softball field. There are only three fields in Haywood County that did not get damaged. Big enough for high school playoff, that's Neo. That's the only field. Dutch pitcher?
It got wiped out.
Little, all the little leagues, there are a baseball field that, North Canton, I think. North Canton, Jonathan Valley, but are they big enough to play high school football or high school softball, baseball? No, there are only three fields, three fields in Haywood County that is suitable enough for our high schools to play on. That's Neo.
So would, would they play away, like all their games away if their, their fields are not ready, would they play?
Oh, Bethel, I forgot, I forgot Bethel.
Yeah, Bethel, then you've got the complex in Canton and, and Bethel.
Complex in Canton, so Bethel, yeah, I forgot about, we forgot, yeah, Bethel, baseball and softball, so you've got five fields.
Yeah.
But that means that if their schedule's already made, Bethel would have to look at their schedule. Tuscola, Pisgah would have to look at all their schedules to see if they could use those fields and then.
You've got middle school.
Then you've got middle schools.
Tuscola could probably, softball, probably play Waynesville Middle softball.
Oh, well, well, uh, Waynesville Middle, did Waynesville Middle softball? Yeah, so you've got Waynesville Middle. Yeah, so yeah, so six, you've got six fields, you've got six fields for.
David, you've got to make up your mind.
You've got six fields for, you've got six fields for fifteen teams.
Is, is Bethel Middle High School compatible?
And softball?
And baseball, and baseball and softball, there are very little differences. I think softball's rough, about two hundred feet, so softball, most softball, middle school and high school. Baseball is variations. I think there are very little difference. You're talking about Waynesville, Waynesville, when they played out there at the Folk Moon, I think it was at three eighteen maybe. And I think Tuscola was at three twenty.
Yeah, I think three fifty maybe in the deep corner.
In the deep corner, so you, you're talking about.
You got a short court, they like it anyway.
I mean, I'm not a baseball person, but you're saying it's compatible.
Yeah, they're very compatible.
Yeah.
Same size down.
I mean, some of the high schools, if it's short, some of the high schools would probably love to play in Tuscola.
Home runs, really. The stats have looked good for a year. Put a little asterisk on it.
No, but I think Neo, I think Neo is, I think it's as big as Pisgah or Tuscola.
One of them.
The one of them, yes. And then the softball, that's where Pisgah played, their softball.
So best I can tell, it's going to be do the work, get the bids, do the work, and evaluate a couple days before the season if the sod's tight.
And, and challenge, and challenge us all to work as fast as we can and not take out dead periods as when we can.
Yeah.
I mean, I know holiday seasons is going to be tough to get contractors, but it may not succeed. I know that's going to interfere a little bit with, and you've got weather days.
So I have a question with the emergency status that we gave for Pisgah Memorial Stadium. Anything that was done down there by insurance?
Or reimbursable through FEMA.
Or reimbursable through FEMA.
Correct. And so we followed a similar path with baseball and softball. You've got to have a set, Patrick's an expert at this, you correct me at any time. I ought to be an expert, this is the fourth floor, I have to admit, but, um, you have to have a set of design plans to ensure fair bidding. Because as you said, without accurate plans, you get inaccurate bids and you open the door for a claim of this wasn't a fair bidding process. So you first must have a set of accurate plans created by a licensed designer, architect, engineer, what have you. Second thing you got to have is the bid process. Um, and you have to go through all the, the proper channels and all the proper, uh, legal requirements in that bidding process. It's up to the right number of days, it's a sealed bid, it's open, uh, and the bid's recorded and you select the, the lowest apparent bidder. Then, once that portion's completed, you have to have the work completed by a licensed contractor, someone certified or qualified to complete that work. If you miss any one of those steps, FEMA's going to go. You're right. And so that's the process we follow.
And I think part of that, there's, there's a number threshold, so FEMA's is two hundred and fifty thousand. So if the work is going to be over that or projected to be over that, that's when you have to do that formal bid process, which is what we have to do on these fields because that's over the threshold, or at least we're projecting to be over the threshold.
Is that for each field? Two hundred fifty thousand, we don't have to do the bid process?
We still have to bid it, but it can be an informal bid process. We can call them and solicit the bids and say, hey, you've done work for us before, can you get this done? What's it going to cost? So like fence scapes comes to mind because we talked to three or four different fencing companies, but fence scapes was the only one that could do the work in the timeframe that we wanted them to do it. And so we chose them. The other ones, they were, they were going to be months out to be able to get the job done.
So would there be possibility of doing some of the work and equal to the, the, the fields that way? If it's under two hundred fifty thousand dollars, just go ahead and have it wound up and have it go and not, and try to, like we say, cut down some of this, this time?
So that's why you need the design, so you know how much the damage is or what the estimate is.
But we have those for all the Pisgah and Canton from the last time.
Well, but it, even it will need to be rebid because the damage is different, you know, it could be worse, could be less. You still have to get your number.
Yeah, we have the prior plans from what was on, what was put on the ground post the twenty-one floods. That makes sense. So that's, you know, a bit of an advantage to that end is the picture is largely already established. It was like, just think of it this way, if, if this hundred feet of fence was not damaged and can be saved, then we just noted it to remain. Um, so we'll start at the end of it and then go around and put new fence where we need it, but salvage what we can salvage, you know, a bit. And that's the, that's the case at, at the county.
Can I, let me ask a question that I, I just now started thinking about. Did Wayneville baseball field get hit? The one at the Folk Moon? Have we even looked at it?
Yes, we, we looked at it. Um, there was some mud that needed to be cleaned up and there was a spot under one of their dugouts that got rutted out quite a bit.
But we're not.
But other than that, they're, they're okay.
So we're not putting that field into any of the fields that we're talking about?
Yeah, their, their fencing was fine, all that stuff, they're, they're okay.
Ironically enough, when I was the principal, Waynesville, I'd make him McKay come and help me. Ironically enough, when I was the principal, Wayne'sville, I'm making the K, come and help me, uh, put in that culvert. It used to, any slot flood, it, it'd roll into the infield and flow down the first baseline. But he come and put in a culvert and regraded. He also did that backstop there as well.
So would his plans still be out there from when he did it originally, like?
Good question. That'd be a good question for him. I don't know that he had specific plans. I'm sure he had something to mention alley that he was working off of, but I don't know how they, you know, but he talked extensively to me about having laid out, you know, Tuscaloosa baseball as we know it today and Tuscaloosa softball, you know, and about the orientations of the same and so forth. And he's very, very knowledgeable and mindful of it, so.
Might want to reach out to him soon as we go. Maybe that.
Do they have to file this? Do you have to file this with the county?
I don't think so.
Is that twenty or twenty-five years?
Because you'll need a flood permit. But I bet historically not.
Don't get your eyes on me.
Well, he's pretty, he's pretty sharp with the level on his own.
So Haywood County Schools does own that land where Tuscaloosa fields are located, correct?
Correct, yeah. On the hallway to the main room. That's why the buses are still that big.
Unless we try to sell it. I think that's where that deed was, wasn't it?
Well, Charlie, didn't Charlie McConnell buy that to put the bus garage down there and then found out that it was in the flood plain? And then that's when they put the baseball fields down there?
I don't know the history on that. Question was, is, did Charlie McConnell, when he was superintendent, buy that piece of property thinking that we could put the bus garage down there? And then it ended up being, found out it's in the flood plain and then that's when Tuscaloosa baseball and softball ended up down there. More of a common idea.
All right, can I just get, since we've talked about a lot, let me make sure I'm sort of clear as mud here. So we're saying Tuscaloosa baseball, we're scratching, we're going to try to just do the work there if we can. How that's going to be, and then all the other fields are going to be processed that we win in twenty twenty-one. Is that sort of how?
Yes.
What, how this conversation has went for the last twenty minutes?
That's the way I read it.
Okay. Baseball, by itself, Tuscaloosa baseball, all the other fields are going to go in the process.
The only other one we discussed, Patrick, was Canton Middle softball possibly. But I don't see any good outlook for Pisgah baseball, Pisgah softball, or Canton Middle baseball.
After walking out there, Canton Middle softball looked, other than dugouts, looked pretty repairable fence and dugout.
Yeah.
The dugout, the infield needs to be repaired.
Yeah, it, but minimal, but if we could get that field back online by February twenty-fifth, if softball's the same day as baseball, then if it's a two hundred yard or two hundred foot fence and baseline's the same, maybe Canton Middle and Pisgah softball could share that field and maybe throw Neo in there a little bit as well.
Yeah, I can, I think it's been a couple of years up there. The pitch and mound may be a little different from high school to middle school.
Gotcha.
It may be, it may be and it may not. I, I, I can't remember. But did the black paint on the dugouts, did it survive? It did, it did survive.
Most of them failed, I think.
Yeah, there's, it's still on the block. The block's gone, but it's still on. I'm just making sure that black paint.
You know, you know I didn't like two different colors dugouts, but anyway, that's just me being.
All right, what's next on the updates on Mr.?
Yeah, um.
Did y'all, Patrick probably would like to go home.
Can I, hey, can I ask you one more thing? Tuscaloosa Farm, I carry all my insurance business and personal at Farm Bureau and I am getting hammered. Where do we stand on Tuscaloosa Farm?
So I can tell you John Bergen, um, has finished the work up there, but currently the permit is with the ASI, the ones that did the site work to begin up there. And so they've gotta get the permit changed from ASI to John Bergen, which we're trying to work on for inspection.
What about this SEPT?
So I believe the pumping hole is approved, um, but I have been reaching out, I don't really get touch with you. I have made half a dozen attempts to reach downstream property owner, um, to talk about, let's call it the long-term solution, which is to get gravity sewer out of there. Um, that property transferred, um, it's an LLC held in Florida. Um, I think when the Mountain Energy Stores sold that, Tom Morgan who had Mountain Energy here locally owned that piece of property, because I know, I think that was before y'all at one point, he was entertaining, putting a C-store down there, um, several years ago. Anyway, that property moved with that. I've reached out to that property owner, email, text, voicemail and otherwise, and can't get a response. Um, you know, and hopefully, I mean, my hope would be we'd add value to that property by bringing sewer across it, you know.
So we're basically staying still with that SEPT until you get a response from that property.
Yeah. I mean, there are other options that we talked about, you know, which include pump stations and, you know, getting the gravity sewer like.
Going around.
It's just, you know, not, not ideal.
Yeah.
Doesn't make, make the most sense, but yeah.
So where are we on the fence?
The fence, they will be as soon as they finish, um, everything at Wayne'sville Middle. Um, then they're gonna be going up to.
Are they working at Wayne'sville Middle right now?
They are. They, uh, there's some crew there. They're putting up those gates, they're finishing up on those gates and then the, um, around CU Weatherby in the back, that part of the fence, um, as well. So when that's done, then they're gonna. Yes, yeah, and it, and it should be fine, yeah. Um, they've been doing it in chunks so that it gets done and then the old's there and then, you know.
He got sent back. Some of his stuff got washed out.
Correct.
He had the storage building in Hazelwood.
I was wondering, I saw some mud and stuff on.
Yeah, well, and we, and I talked to him about that. He said, well, my guys probably grabbed some stuff they shouldn't have and we'll make sure we swap it out because there were a couple of pieces that were dirty or had been banged up inside down there. And, um, so Mark said he, he can make it right and fix those and switch them out. But as far as the big gates go for Wayne'sville, that's what happened to them. That's why it's taken so long. They got washed down the river or destroyed.
So Patrick, how long do we give trying to find that property owner's response before we have to explore option B through Z?
Yeah, good question. You know, um, probably part of that's, you know, what's our, what's our tolerance? I mean, I thought about it, you know, at one point, would it, you know, would it put them off if they got a, you know, a registered letter from board attorney just saying, hey, we're trying to talk to you? Yeah, I've got all the contact and, and Mr. Morgan actually shared, um, their cell phone. Well, I may, I may do a fight, do the closing of the property, go through that, go through the attorney. You know, so just, uh, and I was trying to be as sticky sweet as I knew how to be.
So Graham, that hundred and twenty days that we were granted by the county, that has not started yet.
Correct, we haven't started yet.
Okay, okay, all right.
Well, I've been on this board for almost two years right now and we've been working on that farm. So Pat, you help Patrick get a hold of it. We need, we need this one done. Uh, it, it's been strung out for too long and we need to make some progress.
Thanks, Patrick.
Thank you, sir.
Patrick.
I like the word hope.
Um, so just the next part, continuing with flood recovery updates, and I really, um, I just wanted to see if you all had questions and was just gonna mention a couple of things and then open it up to you. It's really in your packet, um, we put the environmental, electric, so the environmental from the, uh, them sign off on that. The electric, um, from Reason Old Macklerath, they've signed off on that, and then our one structural engineer report. Um, we should have Paul's, the Hope is tomorrow, our other structure, structural engineer report. Um, they did a lot of work today, John Bergen did. I was down there for a good chunk of the day. Um, Paul came and checked everything this evening. Um, he liked everything that he saw. The only thing that's still outstanding is they put the brackets up in the press box that were needed. Um, but part of that is they have to epoxy in those bolts and the epoxy has to set. So tomorrow they should be able to tie those in after it's set and he'll come back and check off and ideally we'll get that one as well, which will then allow us to get our CO, our certificate of occupancy from the town and county. And we should be, you know, good to go.
Time frame? Are you talking about all that tomorrow? Or are you talking about Paul tomorrow and then?
Paul and the CO.
CO on Wednesday?
Yeah, Paul and the CO ideally tomorrow. We've, we've talked to, um.
Once we get the CO, we're gonna, we'll notify the first media schools and we'll bunch go and play the game at Memorial.
Yeah, the, uh, did you hear that Jim?
No, I did not hear that.
Say it again, louder. No, we, we should have, hopefully, the final engineer report tomorrow. He'll sign off, which will then allow us to get the certificate of occupancy. Um, the county and town have already come through and inspected and they're good. They're just waiting on that last engineer report too.
Also, Department of Insurance has evaluated as well.
Yes, yeah, Department of Insurance, they came and actually evaluated every school site. Um, the stadium was one of those sites. They actually checked, so there was an engineer, one of their engineers out there who actually had the same findings that Paul found. He didn't do a formal report because that wasn't, we didn't contract him to do that. But when I spoke with him, he said that he was handling the same things. Who was he with?
Yes.
I'll find it. Well, he, he got, he was hired through, um, OSBN, which is, no, that's not it. That's Office of Budget Management. Um, the State Fire Marshal, who is with, I was trying to do the abbreviation, the State Fire Marshal, who is, um.
Carolina Department of Public Safety.
Correct, who is our insurance is through. Um, but they contracted to other, and there are other companies, other insurance companies, so I'll have to get that guy's card. He gave it to me, um, but I can, I can get that for you. I don't remember the company that he has.
So did you say Department of Insurance?
Yeah, the Department of Insurance actually insures all state-owned property, including school, school buildings and stuff, so yes, that is correct.
So you said they had somebody come out, but they, now do they have a, they don't have an official report saying, yes, it's good, no, it's not?
They won't, as long as they, as long as they, um, concur with, with the specialists that we choose. And they do. We will be insured.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, even though they didn't officially say it, it looks like you had three engineers just looked at.
They concur.
You had a crew to watch him for three or four hours.
I got, he went up down that thing, I can find him, took pictures. I ain't know somebody was like that either.
By the time you get a CO, it's assuredly safe. I have no reservations or worries whatsoever.
So going back to the original question, you're saying CO, Paul tomorrow, you will inform us when all that's done.
Correct.
And then at that point, probably not, probably not lights. That's, that's the timeline.
So they'll, they'll turn the lights on after they get the CO, put the meter back on.
That's correct.
Do you hear that Jim?
Yeah, but didn't, didn't Brown Engineering already sign off on the stadium? And if he did, how does he sign it off when the work's still being done?
Cause it was.
His, his finding worked, it was complex as the other findings from the other engineer, from Paul's.
Correct.
All he saw was the, uh.
Yeah, Jeff Brown only, only noted the bleachers that had moved and asked us to fix that, whereas Paul had a couple of other findings.
Bleachers, the crack and response.
Correct.
And the fence.
So how that works, that engineer, whatever was fixed, what his finding was, then he's going to sign off because his part's done.
That's correct. That's, that's the only finding he had.
He didn't hear what Paul found. He didn't hear what.
Correct. They were all, they were both independent of each other.
That's why it's always good to get a second one. They always want to.
I'd like to go through.
Right.
So I have, I have a question about, um, like with the, the report from Neo, so Neo was only paid to do the fields? Were they, because like I've been hearing from some of the phone calls that I've been getting that like, did they, were they responsible for cleaning the concession stands? And the bathrooms?
Yes, they also did the demudding for us.
They did the demudding?
Correct.
And the testing.
Yes.
And the testing.
And environmental testing.
But then, I'm understanding that some parents and staff have been asked to go down there and clean certain areas and they're not comfortable with that.
That would be, if the school decided to do that, but it's, it's been cleared by environmental.
They've all, all the concessions and bathrooms have been cleared by Neo, everything down there.
They were all sanitized and cleaned, but what they're talking about is, so the magnets and stuff are working. So if you go in there, we went in there today and they tracked in mud and stuff. So you're talking about sweeping them out and stuff like that.
So like the, the heaters that are still on the wall?
They replaced those.
Do they, do they, okay, were they getting replaced?
Yes, those have been changed already. Our maintenance department changes that. That was part of the Reason Old Macklerath.
All the, everything, they were, we were stripped of fire walls and then they put a new desk in, plumb in, but everything.
So all cabinets were pulled out that could absorb water, like particle boards?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and even the ceilings, and they put back ceilings and stuff. We don't, I mean, they are different.
Yeah, our maintenance department.
Yeah.
Okay, so maintenance is doing all those extra projects that are the things after they?
Yeah, a, a lot of that fell under what we had to do in order to, uh, go through the narrative that Reason Old Macklerath gave us in, in replacing the electricity, like the ceiling, for example, in the visitor concession stand, the lights were part of that ceiling and attached to it. So in the process, it was actually, it was a drywall type ceiling, um, and it had fallen through. So we had to pull all that loose and actually Neo actually pulled it down for us and they took, took it out and then our maintenance went in. We put in new, um, new ceiling and did the, the lights in there.
And that's a, is that a waterproof? I was seeing today, is that that green sheet rock stuff?
Um, I think that we just went back with some plywood up there because of, if it was sheet rock, it gets wet and falls through like had been previously.
No, it was strictly the fire, fire bomb.
Correct.
So it, he, so Neo said this is safe to serve food. But basically when you clean it, you're saying it's safe to serve food, I love.
Oh, yeah, we eat chocolate, we eat more.
Okay. Now locker rooms as well for the boys?
Yeah, oh, yeah, they're cleaners.
Correct.
Even the part where they just use storage, I showed somebody today, they even went under the bleachers where nobody can even get. We sent people under there.
They cleaned out an area that Canton Middle was under where they had, they had an area that, that round, they just.
We're tearing out some material that nobody even knew what was.
Yeah, yeah, they'd ask us, look, they could throw this away. I said, well, I don't know, I'll call Canton Middle and see. I called Josh Simmons and he was like, he, he said, I'll go look at it. And he goes down and he calls me, he goes, I didn't even know that room went back there that deep. There's a bathroom down here. I didn't know there was a bathroom down here. But they cleaned, like, I guess Canton had only the, the slide on the visitor's side, on the end near the, um, the armory. That door that slides open, Canton Middle stores stuff in there and they just store kind of right in the front, but apparently it goes down quite a ways.
There's a whole, there's a whole other room.
That's on there, but that's his homestead, but he.
Yeah.
That's the visitor's side. I think we're over there. I mean, y'all are on the other side.
Yeah, we're on the other side.
That's exactly true. That's right. They both went in the same area.
Well, when we get everything signed off on, can we have, can we have a walkthrough if we want one to see it for ourselves?
Absolutely. You can go look at it anytime you'd like to, any of you, um, but I'd be happy to walk through with you if you'd like me to.
I would like to see what's been done.
Yeah, maybe you could see some pictures before. You wouldn't believe some of those areas. Some of that mud was up deep.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty wild. If you didn't know it happened, you wouldn't know it happened.
Yeah, as clean as it was, maybe better.
Yeah, it's most likely cleaner to spend a long time.
Maybe the latest food establishment in Haywood County for a hell of a night. Never know.
Well, we hope it's ready, uh, tomorrow. We hope to have that CO because, um, soccer plays Wednesday.
Oh, that'd be nice.
Again, I'm not gonna run. Again, I'm not gonna rush it, but at this point, you know, every, the, the non-re pairs are the non-re pairs and they're gonna complete those. Paul's gonna issue his piece of paper, uh, certified it's safe, uh, from his structural expertise. It's gonna go through the paper channels and boom, uh, away we go, but you know, they, they also have a soccer game and it's their senior night.
And it's the Tuscaloosa.
They'd obviously have played that again.
Yeah, absolutely.
So just for affirmation, Neo will finish up, cause I did pressure wash where they were putting up the walls because they were spraying on them. Finish that tomorrow morning and then they're going to Tuscaloosa and start on the concession stand and bathrooms. We got a whole crew.
And the baseball.
Yeah, up there. I, I don't know which, I, I don't know which building, we, we send the guys up there and then just start.
There are only, there are only one building up there at Tuscaloosa.
Well, that's one out there. I'll start on that tomorrow.
Yeah, there are only one building at Tuscaloosa softball, baseball.
They'll probably clean by tomorrow afternoon if we got enough people.
Thank you all for that man.
Oh, you're welcome. Yes, sir. Anthony Turner, he's a thank him. He, he put the part on that hand and ground.
Are we keeping track, are we keeping up with the amount of money that our maintenance department is spending on facility upgrades and what they're doing as well? To, to include in the insurance or whatever work you're gonna follow it under?
Yes, that'd be FEMA reimbursement. We are keeping track of that, yes.
He's keeping track of it. Was the answer.
And they're doing a great job. We should, we gotta get a chance to fire them on that.
So just for clarification, and I think it's the right thing to do, we're going to, to forego possibly FEMA funding. We're gonna get Tuscaloosa baseball operational, you know, right?
Correct.
Kent Middle baseball or softball operational, correct?
Yeah.
Um, do we want Patrick, and I would say again, yes on this, my recommendation. I would say let him, if he can continue to complete, complete his plans, his, his designs. Let him go ahead and do that so long as he can do that while we're, we're making them play. Uh, so that beyond that, the laser grade makes all the difference in the world. And they really, they really need to be done.
Well, now what was his, what was his fee for Tuscaloosa baseball?
What's that?
What was his fee for Tuscaloosa baseball?
I wanna say it was one fifty-five. Maybe that was the total. I think that was actually the total for both softball and baseball at Tuscaloosa.
And that was to do two different concepts?
That was to do, yes, the, the different concepts that, um, you all had asked for and then the design work as well. Which that, the design work wasn't necessary at Pizca and Canton because it had been done in twenty-one.
I thought it was one forty. But that.
I think I said that, I may have been off.
We need, we need to dig back into that and I certainly can. So there was a portion for site management oversight. There was a portion for the design and then there was a portion for bidding. And so I just wanna make sure I'm clear, so as we leave out of here, I've, I've got a, a pretty good understanding. It sounds like we would want Patrick to continue to create those designs. So that when Andy, if we're ready, we can.
Well, my thinking is we would want him to complete the designs, but I think we would want him to probably modify the contract to the fact that he probably would not bid and supervise.
Correct, correct.
This, the repairs on the baseball field. So I think it would probably.
Potentially Canton softball as well.
Yeah, and I think there would need to be some modification on the, on the, on the fee schedule.
Sure.
We'll, we'll just need to add an agenda item next board meeting so we can modify and adjust as such.
Yeah.
Okay.
If he could, but he, he is allowed to go ahead and do the plans then if it ever flooded again?
Well, I think.
Yeah, well.
Is that the point, is that the point?
Well, go ahead. Or worrying the event that we decide we, after this season's over and we want a laser grade and saw and fix all those things, we can do that then.
And I will, I think that point, go ahead, we've already paid him, do the site. After the season's over with, that field needs to be laser grade and everything. Like that, there are no ins, ifs or buts about any of that. Once, we can get playable, they'll play, but fine. After that, we've already paid the money, let them do that. Then that field has got to be.
That's a charge to prove.
Yeah, yeah, it's got to be, it's got to be all the laser grade and make it like a baseball field needs to be.
But you can, however, just remember that we're foregoing FEMA funds to help do that. That would be all in our.
Yeah.
And I, correct, I, as, as long as everybody's clear, I just don't want y'all to say, hey, we didn't realize we were on the hook for that. I think it's, again, it's the same argument I made. Uh, these kids need a place to play. I've sat and watched it, uh, in twenty twenty-one. Uh, Pizca's baseball just about went belly up. Uh, they lost their JV team, barely having them for the varsity team. It, it hurts these programs overall. Um, the sad part is I don't know what, I don't know how to help or what to do. Uh, I, I'm not giving up. We'll, I mean, we will keep pushing, but I don't know what to do for Pizca and Canton baseball and I don't know what to do.
For softball.
For Pizca softball, I, I don't see how you get it right.
I think we just need to hold their feet to the fire as much as humanly possible. And get these schedules a little stricter if we can, working with Patrick, working with the chosen. You know, if we can minimize the bid process, if we can minimize the work process, we just need to be aggressive on that. As a, as an entire unit here.
Well, I agree with that. I mean, I think if we set, okay, expectations up front and, and see if we, see if we, somebody can meet them. Because it's obviously, sometimes it's supply and demand, how much help you have, whether you get good wind, good, good weather or not. But, uh, and then as long as they can focus the resources to it, it would be nice to make it happen.
If you did it in December, you'll have a real good chance of doing that grass. That saw will come in fast.
I think what, what we need to pay attention to, I'm a horticulture major here, um, is not limit ourself. If it comes down to one company, I think we need to potentially choose one company per field or one company per two fields. And not pull in a, a four man crew to try to do five fields. You know, if it requires a second and a third company, then so be it. I think that's where we can make up some ground there.
So make sure we don't give too much to one person.
Exactly, exactly.
Is, is there other architect firms that can draw plans for the other fields or, or did it, I mean, do we have to use Patrick on all, all six of them?
We've already gave him the contract, I think, Cameron.
Yeah, sorry, got the contract.
I'm not, Jim, I'm not worried about the architectural process and the drawing process as much as I'm worried about the, the actual work.
Actual, yeah.
Especially holiday season and going into winter, you know?
Well, and, and understand this is possible because for Tuscaloosa baseball, it's under a threshold that does not require that formal bidding process.
Yeah.
That's, that's a lucky break.
Yes.
This is possible with Canton middle softball. That's a lucky break. The other fields, mm, not so much. I mean, they're pushing upwards, uh, around that, uh, two hundred fifty thousand dollar threshold. Uh, and just for clarity sake, um, Mid-South and CDC, um, I heard you say, Mr. Nesbit, about moving, uh, with the same spoo, speed.
Sure.
They were on our fields the Tuesday following the flood events.
Right.
We're not, we haven't wasted any time there.
No.
It's just a different process. One, engage insurance, out it goes. The other, go through the formal bidding process if you wish to seek FEMA reimbursement. And, and then it's, it's just a difference in the way things work. I didn't create them that way. It's just the way they exist. And so, um, you know, you and I think talked about, uh, making those artificial fields.
Absolutely. That was, that was an op, we were trying to brainstorm anything.
Correct. And so, um, you know, we'll, we'll have numbers on that too and they're.
They're high.
Yeah, they are high.
They're high.
So I was thinking, you know, maybe ten to twenty percent markup.
Fifty percent more?
More likely.
Yes, some of them, yeah.
Yeah, so, but just for, uh, clarity sake, there's been no delay.
So that's the only way that you could insure the baseball and softball fields is by going with turf versus ground?
That was the, the discussion Dr. Putnam and I had and it was just a wild haired brain. I was.
Not a bad idea.
Kind of sleep at night thing is if the turf and the soil are not insurable, then astroturf is. However, I will say in the same sense, I don't know of a single middle or high school baseball field, and I don't think Dr. Putnam does either, that plays on astroturf. Now, my daughter and my son travel ball, play on artificial fields, but it, you know, twelve year old versus eighteen year old, totally different. It would give us a insurable surface, but at what cost? The, the ball's gonna come off the turf faster and there's a lot of downfalls, but there's a lot of pros to it too. It's also, we'd have to replace every. Exactly. Ten years and there's, you know, that cost, but I think we came up with a, a rough number there per field and it's expensive.
Five million.
Yeah.
I think four to five million in recurring.
Every ten years.
We wouldn't wanna do that unless we move the fields out of.
Absolutely, yeah.
But we don't need.
We wouldn't want to do that unless the fields are ours also.
And we own the land, yeah, yes.
That's a good point.
So, uh, and you know, I think it's probably a good thing for anyone who, who's listening and for our friends with the media. Um, you know, if anyone is willing to sell land, by all means, contact Chairman Francis and, you know, or someone at the central office, let us know. I know that we're actively participating with some, but golly, we'd love to entertain many.
With the caveat, it's not in the floods and planters.
Yeah.
No more of them. We have plenty of, plenty of that. Anything else? That's it for us, Mr. Chairman. Unless there are other questions that people?
I wanna, I wanna mid, throw something out, not this year. But I want us to seriously look at in the upcoming years, and I know this is gonna be met with resistance and praise, depending on who you are. I want us to look at having the big game, the Tuscaloosa Pizca rivalry game, potentially. Look at having it at Western Carolina University every year. And I say that with a couple of ideas in mind. Number one, it's a larger venue with plenty of parking. Number two, ninety-three percent of high school football players do not play at the next level. It gives those ninety-three percent a taste of what it's like to play on a collegiate level, a collegiate field anyway. Instead of, and correct me if I'm wrong in this, currently the gate from the big game, the home team keeps and runs two years off of currently. Is that correct?
Generally speaking, yes.
My idea, they could split expenses and revenue fifty-fifty after paying the rent of the facility right down the middle. They would each have revenue every year. The only alternating thing would be they would alternate who got the home side of E J Whitmarsh Stadium. So I think, I think that would be an excellent thing. My, my fourth point would be playing in Colowee. If Smoky Mountain High School is, does not have a home game, I think we're gonna gain Western Carolina students on a Friday night that don't have anything to do. I think we're gonna gain Smoky Mountain fans that don't wanna travel. I think we're gonna gain random people from Franklin, Zilbo, Colowee, Tukasiji. We may even gain an extra two thousand individuals paying that gate fee, concession stands, merchandise, whatever. I think that's something as a board that we ought to consider in upcoming years, along with athletic directors and principals at each school. Uh, that's something that we could consider for upcoming years.
I mean, it also, the fifty-fifty, the way that, 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 that pot has grown over the years. I mean, if we had it out there and, and people in Jackson County and other places got involved with that, a fifty-fifty could grow exponentially probably.
Did you pick it up on the camera what he just said? Okay, what Mr. Francis just said was by, by moving it over to possibly moving it over to Colowee, that you could possibly increase to fifty-fifty quite a bit by including people from Jackson County as well.
I'd like to tag along that to say, I don't think we formally thanked Western Carolina University. I think we should do that publicly as a board.
Yeah.
Um, I have talked to one of their board members and they waived any fees except for a small thousand dollar fee that would have been paid by a donor. Uh, they were so gracious and were gonna allow the game and, and could possibly have to still be played there. We still don't know that for sure. But that was so gracious and generous of them. All the monies was gonna go to Pizca, the gate, the concessions. There would be, uh, plenty of seating. Nobody would have to get there at four o'clock to try to get a seat on the visitor's side, plenty of parking. Uh, uh, it's, it's funny you bring that up because everywhere I go, um, I, I have somebody who says that, why don't, why don't we play there? When they find out it was an option, why don't we play there every year? Um, it'd be so, uh, such a treat for the boys, so much easier for us to have a larger crowd. And that's something we wanna see our schools make as much money as possible. Um, cause I really do hope that people, um, that it, you know, it doesn't hurt attendance this year. Um, I hope that they can make as much money as they possibly can, uh, for Pizca, for their school. But I really think we should publicly thank Western Carolina University for their willingness to do that for our county. I really think it could.
Right, right.
Increase attendance.
Right.
Um.
Well, it's the number one high school rivalry in the, in the state of North Carolina and we all know that and so.
Yes.
It would be, uh, something special.
I'll get with Ms. King and Dr. Putnam and we'll hand a letter on behalf of the board thanking them.
That'd be very nice, Jim.
And address it to their, uh, board trustees and all.
They said it was unanimous.
All the.
They voted for it.
Okay.
Yeah, it was unanimous vote, so we really need to be, thank them.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I know pretty of the board members.
And they also, they always have some graduations, I'd say. That's a nice big year, Jim.
Very nice.
Okay, anything else?
Thanks guys for all the hard work.
Yes, thank y'all.
Pat, you look there not, thank you.
He didn't do nothing for thirty seconds.
I was just gonna tell. I'm saying, if Josh Simmons finds my old playbook, brought out and gave me nineteen sixty-nine, I'll, I'll let him, let him know. That's right.
That's how.
Off tackle, off tackle.
That's all Pat's been thinking about since you told him about that. What, what is it?
I'm gonna have some old plates down there.
Yeah.
We, we did have another session. We always put it on there in case something spawns out of this that we might need to go to it, but we certainly will have one. Uh, our next board meeting, November.
That's Tuesday, correct.
Okay.
That is a Tuesday, Monday's, uh, Veterans Day.
Well, just everybody get out and vote if you haven't voted tomorrow.
Very good. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Doug.